Welcome to the July 31st, 2017 Hillsborough Township Board of Education. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on July 24th, 2017 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Bogacheski?
Here.
Ms. Centafonte? Mr. Cooper? Ms. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Haley? Ms. Wesson?
Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
Mr. Gillette? Mr. Kins?
Here. We have a quorum. I'd like to entertain a motion to go to executive session. Please let me read. "Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough in the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: The matter to be discussed are legal matters; the matter discussed in executive sessions shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists." I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
On second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're going to go into executive session. We'll be back at 7:30 for the regular meeting. Thank you. Okay, good evening and welcome to the July 31st, 2017 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. We're back from executive session. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Bogacheski?
Here.
Ms. Centafonte? Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Haas? Ms. Haley?
Here.
Ms. Wesson?
Here.
Mr. Hio? Mr. Gillette? Mr. Kins?
Here. If you can rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a special meeting which has been advertised and advanced. I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. The purpose for this meeting today was to try to get a jump start on air conditioning for Aris Intermediate School. We put out bids last week, we opened up the bids last week, I think it was Wednesday, that we began that process. And we have on the agenda tonight to approve and award the lowest qualified bidder. Unfortunately, however, the bids came in much higher than what we were anticipating, close to 50% higher than what was estimated at the time. So I'm going to ask the Board to table this particular motion until the Operations Committee has an opportunity to review it, to have a conversation with our architect, and make a plan of action moving forward. The bad news is, is that it came out much higher than what we anticipated. However, we do have enough in our capital reserve that if the Board chooses to fund the project, we can award the bid and assign the additional funds through our capital reserve and approve it on our next public meeting, which is August 17th.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Okay, committee reports, if there are any, will hold off until the next regular meeting. I'd like to open it up now for comments from the Board and public. So we very much welcome and value input from the public. There are two times during board meetings when the public is invited to speak. One time is right now. For any item that's listed on tonight's action agenda or new business, there'll be another public forum towards the end of the meeting about any topic. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the Board. In instances where the Board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the Board President or presiding Board member or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the Board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address and group affiliation as appropriate. Thank you.
Tony Judas, Rivendell Road. I'd like to comment on the situation with the girls' soccer program at the high school and what I perceive as an overall lack of importance that the district places on athletic development of our students. First, let me tell you, I have no personal interest in the girls' soccer program at the high school. I had two boys who have come through the school. They're both athletes. My oldest son graduated in 2011 and was a four-year wrestler at the University of Maryland, a Division One program. And my youngest son is a sophomore at TCNJ where he plays baseball. Both had good experiences in the athletic program at the high school. So I think what is very upsetting to me is that I, this general perception that things are not getting done in the athletic department and we push things aside. For example, the girls' soccer program starts practice in two weeks. There's no coach in place. There's two openings for assistant coaches that have not been filled. And I know you can't comment on personnel issues. Greg was kind enough to put up on the Hillsborough forum that there might be an imminent hiring coming within the next couple of days, but that's the only communication that has been passed to either the parents or the students who participate in this sport. And frankly, I think that's insufficient. Leads me to my second point, probably greater importance overall. I think the district has a nobody cares attitude towards athletics in our town. I can cite to you many examples that I've had over my experience here. My boys through eight years of high school. I've lived in town since 1990. There's clearly been a change in culture over the last 10 years or so. First, I went back and watched the June 26th board meeting. And at the board meeting on June 26th, during the action agenda, along with 10 or 12 other things, was the reappointment of coaches. Now, I understand that this might be matter of fact for you guys to do that. I know you have a lot of things on your plate. But what I noticed when I went back and looked at the vacancies listed on that sheet of paper, there were 10 coaches' vacancies out of all of our programs, 10 paid positions. So what interested me was that everybody who was here passed the resolution, the motion was passed, but no one asked a question, why do we have 10 vacancies in the athletic department? What are we doing to fill those vacancies? What are we doing about attracting high-quality coaches? Nothing. It just was passed as a matter of course. Now, I don't come to many board meetings, occasionally watch them on TV, but I guarantee you, if we had 10 teacher positions that were unfilled, we would be having discussion about it. And we would want to know whose responsibility it was to fill those positions and what we're doing about making sure those positions are filled. I didn't stop there. I went a little further. I went online to take a look at the job description for a coach in Hillsborough Township. And what I saw amazed me. The coaching description, as part of the description, said that we compete in the Mountain Valley Conference. Now, I can tell you, my son went to high school in 2007. In 2007, we were in the Skyline Conference. This is a job description that goes online for somebody to apply here. Now, if I in my work put on there a job description that said something that was completely inaccurate, as inaccurate as that, I would lose my job. I would simply lose my job. So I don't understand how a school district this big can make a mistake like that. And then on top of that, in the job description, it didn't even say you needed to know anything about the sport. So you know what was interesting? I went on a couple of days ago. And all of a sudden, now we're in the Skyline Conference, and you should have demonstrated knowledge of the sport in which you coach. So someone made a change because someone made a note that was really embarrassing to the school district. I think it's time that someone has to go back and provide some oversight to our athletic department. And that's really what I'm here for, is I don't think there's enough oversight in the athletic department. I'm not here to call for anyone's job. Everybody has difficult jobs. But is there a way that the Board, along with perhaps a curriculum committee, operations committee, can have an oversight to see what's going on in the athletic department? I mean, some of our students rely on their athletic ability to get them into a better school. Both of my sons experienced that. And it wasn't because something that was done within the school district. It was because my wife and I took the time to make sure that they were showcased so that people would recruit them, and they ended up going to better academic schools than they would. In fact, my older son was told by his guidance counselor that he would never get into University of Maryland as a B student. And he did. And he graduated. And then when he got his acceptance letter, she apologized to her credit. So all I'm asking for is someone to take the initiative to put together an oversight committee so that we don't have 10 vacancies for coaches, that we do have quality coaches within the district. Heck, I'd even be happy if we had a coach in place before the season started. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. Caroline Swets, Ameren Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey. Just to expound on what Mr. Judas has come up here and said, I have four kids that have either graduated or are in the high school. I have twin sophomores in the high school right now. My three girls all went through the soccer program. I have a sophomore in college. She plays at Maryland. I have a freshman going to Cornell. She'll play there. And I have a sophomore. I've been president of the booster club of the soccer program for five years now. My daughters have been captains. You know, so now I have a sophomore in the program. And yeah, you know, a little disappointing. I guess where, what I would like to know, or what I would like to be asked, is in this time that we haven't had a soccer coach, we haven't, I would think, you know, I work for L'Oréal, I'm in the corporate world. When we don't have a position, when we don't have a boss, or we don't have anyone underneath, it falls on one of the people there to keep things rolling. Nothing has been kept rolling. There's been no initial meeting, no initial parent meeting, no initial meeting other than the one to teach you how to sign up for a sport in the high school. There's been nothing after that. I would have thought someone, now I understand there's no head coach, there's no assistant coach, there's no JV coach, I would have thought someone would have kept the ball rolling for these girls. I know many girls in the soccer program. I know many girls coming into the soccer program. And, you know, they're really optimistically looking forward to it. And, you know, thus far, there's been no communication, no meetings, no email lists, forms. All our fundraising that we normally do for the program, to have a banquet, things like that, nothing's been done because there's been no meetings or anything. So the only point, in addition to everything that Mr. Judas said that I would want to make, is, is there not, when we have a vacancy in the school district, is there no one that picks up the role while we have the vacancy and keeps the ball rolling, especially for the start of a season? That, like, we've normally done tournaments by now, little preseason tournaments. We have a week-long clinic usually. That didn't happen. You know, I just, I feel sad. I feel sad for, you know, my daughter that's still in the program, that none of this has happened. And I look at other districts where I know many players, and, you know, the camaraderie is bar none. And I, you know, I'm just surprised that no one has kept the ball rolling for, so if we had difficulty finding a coach, so be it. I would have thought someone would have stepped in and just started the ball rolling for the program. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. This is my first time attending one of these meetings, so I'll admit, I'm not exactly sure I understood what you said about the response or no response to, I guess, a public statement. But this being my first time, I have to admit, I'm not exactly sure how it works, so I'm just going to say what I came to say and ask the questions and hope that maybe there's some kind of exchange so I can understand what happens next. But to be honest with you, I'm here primarily because of the recent press Hillsborough Schools have received about, I think, an additional allegations or investigation going into a former teacher and principal in the Hillsborough Township Schools. And as a parent, it's concerning. Like I said, I'm new to this. My daughter just finished her kindergarten year at Hillsborough Elementary. So I'm here not just to learn the process and what happens and what the policies may be, but also to ask if there is anything that the Board of Education is doing in response to those things. And I'm not looking to name individuals or address certain things that are going to have a legal nature to them, but it's more around the fact of learning what the school township policies are around a teacher being alone behind closed doors with a student. What if, when these allegations come up, or the Board of Ed is made aware of them, how do you communicate this to the parents that may not necessarily have access to the information that you have, if we're even allowed to have access to it? And what are the policies around hiring teachers and the background checks and the fingerprinting and FBI? And I realize that a lot of these things aren't captured in that process, but doing them in such a way that maybe it's not just at the initial hire stage, but are done annually. Again, it's more about educating myself, but also wanting to understand now that these things have come to light in a public forum, what the Board of Education has done. I know there was an incident back in 2007 with a teacher in the high school who was let go and then later convicted, and pretty sure I read that served some time for relations with a high school girl. So I'm really looking to know, like, what the Board of Ed has done to respond to that, or what the Board of Ed intends to do to respond to those kinds of things. Not because you can't prevent anything that may or may not have happened, but what do we do in response to that? For me, as a parent, it's not just putting the burden on you. It's also how do we, as a community, get involved and know what the policies are, what the trainings are, what the process is, and what the Board of Ed can share with us when these things do come up, so we're aware of things that impact the safety of our kids.
Okay. Thank you. Real quick, just for the public record, name and address?
Duena Yanez, Piney Woods Drive in Hillsborough.
Okay. With regard to the first part that you mentioned with the litigation, so that involves litigation against the Board of Education, and our policy is not to comment on ongoing litigation. For inquiries, you may contact Bob Gold of Golden Albines, who's representing the Board in this matter. With regard to hiring practices and policies and those types of things, I think you can share some of that information.
Sure. In the state of New Jersey, our professionals who receive state certifications for either a teacher or administrative position and other positions that work in schools are required to go through a criminal background history check. That criminal background history check looks at any violation that would be disqualifying at the state or at a federal level. So there's a dual-pronged approach that the state police review it, review the fingerprints as well as the FBI. Anyone who is convicted of a disqualifying condition cannot serve in New Jersey public schools. Their certificate is pulled as a result of that. If there are any allegations of inappropriate action on the part of a staff, it's reported to the authorities, including the Police Department and the Division of Child Permanency and Protection, what used to be called DIFIS as well.
So is that, I guess, to better understand that, the background and the thorough check is done only at the hiring process?
Only at the time of hire. That is correct.
Okay. Has the Board of Ed or the Township considered doing them on an annual basis? Just because there could be things from an outside district, from an outside place, from even a different state sometimes, that may show up in a background check. And I ask these questions because I'm an HR professional, so I do those on new hires all the time. And there are times, depending on the type of work and the individuals, you do have the liberty to run them on a more frequent basis. Has the Township considered that, or has it even been brought up?
If there is a criminal conviction during employment, the employee is responsible for reporting that to me, and then we inform the Board of Examiners, which is the certification authority within the state of New Jersey. Typically, if the court is working or there's a conviction of a school employee, the court informs the Board of Examiners as well.
Okay. And, but that only happens, obviously, at the conviction state?
Yes.
If there's a conviction, then the state would notify the Board of Ed? Otherwise, it falls on the employee to notify?
Both. They have a reporting requirement. In fact, upon arrest, public employees have a reporting requirement to the superintendent of schools.
Okay. And if they don't?
That's an insubordinate act. It's actually a violation of law, and there are serious penalties for failing to report.
Right. And the reason I ask that is because my guess is nobody would want to know that you were arrested or for whatever reason. I think a lot of these things could be possibly picked up on maybe an annual background check.
Right, it could be. But arrest records are public, and they are, they're reported and published on police blotters, on local papers and otherwise. Someone takes a significant risk in not reporting their arrest. It is a public information.
Right.
And the law requires it.
Right. Okay. My other question is around the training and safety, particularly around safety, student safety and codes of conduct, code of ethics, when it comes to teachers. And I hate that we're even talking about this, because I honestly do believe the teachers I have encountered in Hillsborough are amazing, and sometimes they get dragged into this nonsense. But this is the world we're living in, and sometimes, like the saying goes, it takes one rotten apple. But what type, or where do we find, like, the kind of training or the safety measures or the codes of conduct that teachers are supposed to abide by? And are they enforced? Are they done in annual training in the school, reminders of, these are the things that are allowed in a code of conduct? This is, you know, we're starting a new school year. And I'll be honest with you, maybe I'm on the paranoid side, but it scares me, because I can only be responsible for my kids when they're with me. I entrust them to the school, and I want to make sure that everything possible is being done to make sure they're safe.
Right. All teachers, certified professionals and others, I believe, non-certified professionals as well, go through annual training? We have a system that they are required to complete the training, and then it's certified, so we know who has completed and who needs to make up any training that is, that's not completed.
Are any of these things done in training with students? About just boundaries and safety and, you know, what's appropriate behavior, what's not, it's not okay? And I don't know what the policy is, so I might as well just ask that straight out. Is there a policy in Hillsborough Township Schools that forbids a teacher from being behind closed doors with a student alone?
Yeah, it's really common sense that dictates that as well. But the training talks about reporting requirements, if there is any allegation or there's a concern that's generated, what is required by law of public school employees to report. Any issue of child abuse or neglect, we're required to report that by law as well. And we do have within our curriculum student safety measures, part of our health and physical education, as well as some of our guidance work that we do with children as well.
Right. But I guess my direct question is, is there a specific statement that says a child or a teacher is prohibited from being alone behind closed doors with a student?
I don't know if there's a policy on that.
Code of Conduct. I don't know if it actually states that or not. I'm trying to look. Do you have a?
Well, definitely take a look.
Okay. And if not, I mean, is there a way, or how do we get it to a place where students are trained on that as well? Because, again, a lot of the offenders are not the students, it's teachers. A teacher, I don't want to include everybody in that bunch, but how do we, as a community, right, reach out to the Board of Ed, which is you all, and say, at least I know as a parent, I would want that? How do we get that to be a policy that is also communicated to students and trained on?
I hear you. We're going to go through and be able to report back.
Okay.
When we have the specifics and the details.
Okay. And then going back just to the background checks, what, I guess, would need to happen in order for an annual background check to be done? I mean, I know that there's a basic requirement, but there's nothing that holds us from going above and beyond? Or is there?
I'm not sure of that. I'd have to, we'd have to ask, and we can refer the question to committee.
And then just going on the question, I know you said that there are things that are involved in litigation, or when it involves personnel, you're not allowed to comment, but not looking to comment on the litigation or the personnel matter itself, but more, how do we, as parents, stay in the loop of what's happening in our township schools before it hits the media? How does the Board of Education keep us, you know, informed as to, you know, there was a, whatever, a resignation this week over this and this and this? We are not at liberty to discuss anything else outside of it, but these events have happened in the Hillsborough Township School system over the last week or month, or whatever that looks like.
All personnel actions with regard to hiring, with regards to reassignment, with regards to resignations, retirements, recommendations to reappoint, those are presented to the Board, and the Board must act on that and must have a majority of the full Board membership in order to pass those employee actions. It's defined by one of our voting policies. So that occurs with every board meeting. So that, it gets published ahead of time, we get notified, and then the actual employee actions that the Board votes on is on the agenda, which is published beforehand.
Okay. And those are published, I've honestly only just seen it on the Facebook page. Does it get published elsewhere?
Yeah.
Yeah, on our website.
So https.us. So we have a list of the agenda for the meetings as minutes are approved. Those will also get uploaded. And then additionally, on the website, we have the whole list of all the Hillsborough Township public school policies and many regulations, which is the administrative documentation for that, for a number of areas that are required by state law.
I'm actually projecting from that website right now. What you see is the agenda for today's board meeting, and all of this is archived and available for public review.
Okay. Thank you. And then additional question is around, given the media attention, right? What are your thoughts, or what are your action items, just proactively on ensuring, I would say, not concerned about the individuals or the litigation itself, but just how does the Board of Ed in Hillsborough react to things like this?
Well, when there are legal suits that are brought up against the Board, we deal with them through the appropriate, through appropriate legal representation. And for the majority, as I mentioned, our policy is not to comment on ongoing litigation. So a hypothetical, if we were sued for X, Y, and Z, we're not going to disclose that until after it gets settled. And even if it's settled, it may not be communicated.
Is that the policy of the Board, or is that just a New Jersey regulation, a township rule? Or who decides what, I guess, is communicatable versus what's not?
Most of it is due for legal reasons.
Okay.
Through statute and policy. And also just from, just to clarify, the Board of Education is, that legal body is distinct and separate from the Township Committee.
Okay.
So we operate independently from the Township. We have our legal representations, the Board members, there are nine of us, which serve there. Township Committee is a completely different, it's a municipality.
Right.
And they're different. So they're different entities with different purposes and goals like that. So the Township Committee doesn't get involved with Board of Education activities and vice versa.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment? Oh.
My name is Kiro Tangavelo. On the same topic she just touched, I want to highlight two points. I know somebody is going to check the policy in place. If there is no policy, can the Board enforce that it's always like open door and the doors cannot be closed to the student? Can the Board enforce that? If you could find a way to enforce, that would be great. And the second thing, I know you have your legal boundaries, but if it is within your legal boundary, can you stop any pension or any benefit going to that individual from this Township? That's all.
Thank you.
Hello. Squamazafaro, 161 Bywater Way in Hillsborough. A few months ago, we were standing here discussing the drug policy at the high school, the random drug testing. And I was on the forum today, and Mr. Gillette had put something out there about something to the regards of the money that we would pay has nothing, you know, the money that we would pay doesn't, doesn't, I'm trying to say this nicely, basically, the money we would pay doesn't constitute a problem. It would be a problem, basically.
It wouldn't solve the problem.
It wouldn't solve the problem. Now, this is something that's very dear to my heart. I have a
And I was on the forum today, and, um, Mr. Gillette had put something out there about something to the regards of the money that we would pay has nothing, you know, the money that we would pay doesn't, doesn't, I'm trying to say this nicely, but basically, the money we would pay, um, doesn't constitute a, a problem. It, it would be a problem, basically.
It wouldn't solve the problem.
It wouldn't solve the problem. Now, this is a, uh, something that's very dear to my heart. I have a nephew who passed away of a drug overdose, that I can tell you, if he, there was a drug policy in, man, in, in his high school, it was something that might have flagged, he could have been flagged for and, and found out. Um, it's just very sad that we're gonna put a couple of thousand dollars in, where that, if I go through the board minutes, I guarantee we could save three thousand dollars of, every meeting of money we spend to do things, and we're just gonna throw away on some kid's life, we're gonna put money on, you know, a matter of a couple thousand dollars on, on a life. And to me, that's very sad, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Windricki, 621 Cornwall Corin, Hillsborough. Just going back to the, uh, press-related comments about the former principal, I just, it sounded like some of our policies are based on, you know, uh, knowing the, how to do the right thing. I think that if those policies aren't in there, such as an open door or how you're alone with a student, it needs to be written in there. I wish this world wasn't like that, but these days, we need that kind of clause and statements in the policy in black and white, so people know exactly what they're supposed to be doing and what they cannot be doing with our children. My daughter is about to start the school system this year, so this, this is kind of like my introduction to it. I just wanna make sure that mine and everyone else's kids will be safe while at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Estvez at 950 Robin Road, and I'm behind, in the heels of exactly what Duena and Mr., sorry, I missed your name, were talking about with regards to the principal that's been accused of sexually abusing two kids. And it is also a major concern. Um, and my kids are about, will start next year in school, and that's a big, big worry of mine. And one of the things, if anything, that we talked about was, you know, with the whole policy of trying to get things in, about trying to catch it in the, in the hiring, if we had actual policies where regardless, even if we had missed that in the hiring, I think having policies in place where absolutely, there's never a situation where it is okay for, for an adult to be alone with a child in the staffing session, it's, it's probably something that could have been avoided, simply because that policy was in place. So this teacher slash principal wouldn't have the, wouldn't have had the opportunity, uh, and wouldn't have had the space to do something like this to a student. So I know you guys had said you were gonna take something back. Is there a timeframe with which we can get an idea of when we would hear something back in terms of how we would go about actually instituting a policy like this?
So in terms of policy, in terms of timing, we would have to refer it back to committee, to the appropriate committee. So this would be, um, HR committee, and it also sounded like that there were some curriculum and instruction aspects to it. Um, so the, the board members and the appropriate administrative people would be reviewing that. If there are legal questions, we would have to send those out to appropriate counsel to get response back, both in terms of what can be done and what can, cannot be done, either by legal statute, whether it's state or federal or local. Um, so the, the typical process or time that it takes, um, when there's an, an issue that comes up that the board addresses can be anywhere from the two to six-month time period. And it may, may or may not result in a direct action. A recommendation may be that what we have is, is appropriate, and then we can communicate that out.
Okay. So the process of the communication coming back is within two to six months, or a decision?
I would, I would say that in terms of, um, a decision, and the decision may be not to, not to do anything because, um, the, the, things are already in place.
Okay. And so, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Seeing no other public comment?
Nope. Do you wanna go right into the board agenda?
Yeah. Okay, now we're going to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. Kins. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related, um, services, travel and related expenses, excuse me.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item 7.1 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Sure. Ms. Bogacheski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Continue on.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources to promote Anthony DeLuca from maintenance worker to maintenance foreman.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item 8.1 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bogacheski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, as, as I mentioned during the superintendent's report, motion 9 dot 1, which is the resolution to award the ARIS window AC project bid, be tabled until the operations committee has an opportunity to review the matter more fully, discuss it with administration, with their architect.
I'd like to entertain a motion to table item 9.1 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Ms. Bogacheski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That was all.
That was it?
Okay. Uh, we have informational, uh, information that's been provided to the board. Now, we'll open it up for the second, um, opportunity for the public to speak. Yeah, this could be on any items. Okay. Open it up to board members for any new role business?
Um, just wanted to address a few things. So I, I sometimes comment on Facebook, on the community forum, um, but I don't express a personal opinion, and I think that, um, everyone needs to be reminded that when you're expressing your personal opinion, ala Mr. Gillette, that he's not speaking for the board, because I don't think it's any big secret, and I know Greg's not here, not, not speaking out of turn, it's not a secret that he's against drug puck testing, but he shouldn't be going on a forum saying that. He should be putting a little asterisk at the bottom, saying, "This is not representative of the opinion of the Board of Education," first of all. And second of all, when we had the parents that were coming here and speaking about the drug testing, as I have every year, I've asked how much money we've spent up to the point now on the drug testing, and I still haven't heard. And it's, I go through this every year, and I know I get shot down. So I want to know, by the next meeting and for the public, how much money we spent in this school this year from September to June on drug testing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just ask clarity on what Haley was asking for, because there's, you know, there's drug testing, there's random drug testing, which is done, um, which is what Mr. Gillette commented on, um, which is done based on, obviously, random. And one year, the first year I was on board, um, they didn't complete the number of tests that we expected. Um, so that is one part of, um, and then there's also, if anybody presents under the influence, that's totally separate.
Yeah. What, what the random drug testing is, not, and I know they're not allowed to say the numbers, because we've been told, "Well, if we give out the numbers, and that's a problem too," and whatever. I just wanted, because that's what Jordan said, right? Jordan, you've said, "We cannot give out the numbers of how many tests we performed."
Oh, you, you asked about.
I wanna know how, what the, what was budgeted and how much money we spent of it.
We'll get that to you in the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does that, that kinda makes it clear, right?
Yeah.
All right. Any other comment from board members?
This is a hot mic. Um, I just, it was brought to my attention that, um, Janne Rubin, who's a rising high school, um, Central High School senior, she's running a completely long program for girls in grade sixty-six through seventh grade, and, um, running from Monday all to Sunday, Friday, Sunday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, 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 Wednesday,